Good evening, everybody. I am June 10th, July 21st, meeting is called Order. We have application by members truly in the pledge allegiance. We be laying our council meeting on the ground with standing on the prayer and pledge. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we give you praise and thanks for a reasonable portion of our health and strength. We thank you, Lord, for keeping us throughout this day. We ask for your guidance as we do in every meeting. Whatever we do is done decently in and order. Even if we don't agree on everything, let us do it in a respectful manner. God, on today's agenda, we are recognizing birthday of the U.S. Army. We thank you for all the brave men and women, not only today but the time passed who have served in the army and in the rest of our military. Continue to give them guidance. Thank you for peace on earth. It's an awesome day. Good evening, everybody. I am June 10th, July 21st, meeting is called Order. We have application by members truly in the pledge allegiance. We be laying our council meeting on the ground with standing on the prayer and pledge. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we give you praise and thanks for a reasonable portion of our health and strength. We thank you, Lord, for keeping us throughout this day. We ask for your guidance as we do in every meeting. Whatever we do is done decently in and order. Even if we don't agree on everything, let us do it in a respectful manner. God, on today's agenda, we are recognizing birthday of the U.S. Army. We thank you for all the brave men and women, not only today but the time passed who have served in the army and in the rest of our military. Continue to give them guidance. Thank you for peace on earth. It's an awesome day. We pray, amen.
Please join me in the same as may it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, thank you, Councilman P T. Next. Item is the reading and approval of minutes from our most recent meeting, which happened and took place on Tuesday.
May I have that motion? It's been suspended. We need to make that in the end.
Motion. Oh, sorry. Good, good. Motion has been made second. All right, has been made second to suspend the reading of minutes and to God, now passing out that record any comment about this particular motion. All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacey Rollcall.
Eli Nelson Smith Harrington P T.
All right, that motion carries. All right, next we have special recognition. Just want to recognize the employee of the month, Mr. Ricky Beer, is that how I say it?
Beer.
Beer, say beer, okay. Mr. Ricky Beer. And he's not physically here with us today, but we were chatting a little bit earlier when we started placing the post on. And just want to give down those, you know, thanks to his employee from Fana Works. Want to give you an opportunity to kind of share some things about Mr. Beer.
Yes, sir. Ricky Beer is a great employee of Fana's Work Department. He's been there 21 years. He's one of the best in our work around. Don't say much, just do his job. He's running streets sweeping all the night, just keep the streets clean. He also is our biggest man that teaches small kids that the lawn was going and he mowed the city streets. The different things that we have to put around the city for everybody looking at. And Ricky is one that keeps everything on lock and key, you know, to make sure it doesn't leave, that no one's supposed to leave, make sure we keep up with all the work. He does a great job and he really gives a lot with all the three employees. He don't say much, but he does a great work. And I really appreciate Ricky Beer as a fellow.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate you. 21 years, is that how you say that too?
Yes, sir. 21 years.
21 years of service in the city. Like I said, when we do the Facebook post, you'll see some of those other things that kind of meet interest, if you will, of Mr. Beer. So I want to continue to do the great work that he's doing.
And I don't have to appreciate him when he comes to us.
I will. Thank you after he gets us sweeping all the downstairs. All right, we have a special guest now. Friends All United for Natchitoches Animals are recently sent from Fana. So wanted to kind of present, giving us information. Just want you to state your first last name and share their presentation.
Juanita Lee Murphy. Thank you all for including us on your agenda tonight. I'm Juanita Murphy and I work with the Division of Fana, the division called Spay and Neuter. I am here to talk to you about one subject tonight. Spay or neutering an animal is the single most effective way to prevent abandonment, abuse, neglect, and euthanasia. Every time we spay and neuter one female and one male dog and cat, we potentially preventing 67,000 dog births and 66,000 cat births over a six-year period. Do you have that handout we gave you? Oh, there. That's, that's the truth. And to accommodate this birth rate, every one of the 13,866 households in that parish would need to provide a home for 10 dogs or 10 cats. Are you all ready for that? And the birth rate rises exponentially for every year after six. There are not enough households in this parish to provide homes for these animals. So they are put out, abandoned, or killed, or surrendered to the city shelter. Spay and Neuter is dedicated solely to spay and neutering pets. The funds raised for spay and neuter are not commingled in any other Fana funds. And all money is used to provide vouchers to members of our community who want to be responsible pet owners but need assistance to offset the cost to spay and neuter their pets. This includes people who adopt an animal from our city shelter. When we spoke to you last year, we focused on the dog population, but since then, the number of applications for assistance with cats has surpassed the number of requests for vouchers for dogs. There are numerous areas within the city where a kind and compassionate person begins feeding and abandoning a cat, and before you know it, they have a ferro colony of 20 or 30 cats. As our ability to transport animals out of the state for adoption has slowed and nearly stopped in 2022, every companion animal spayed or neutered greatly reduces the number of animals that will end up at the city shelter or that Fana will be required to rescue. Currently, Fana has 100 dogs and animals in our care. We have 92 dogs and eight cats. In our care, either at our sites, we have two little sites, or we have the foster homes. And we are working with numerous people in the city, and Brenda Stani is one of our lead cat representatives, in the city to spay and neuter feral and semi-feral cats to reduce the cat communities. All animals in Fana's care are spayed or neutered unless they are not old enough or unless they are scheduled to transport to a rescue organization that handles their own spay and neuter procedures. Fana's operating funds, not the spay and neuter, pays for the animals in our care that we spay and neuter. They are not paid for from spay and neuter funds. All spay and neuter money is used solely to assist our community members with spay and neutering their pets. And that's very important. The program is gaining traction. Do we have this line? Or their next piece of paper? Sure, we gave it. It's gaining, our applications are rapidly increasing. As a point of comparison between January 1st and May 31st, 2024, spay and neuter has covered spay and neuter vouchers totaling $16,486. Between January and May 1st, May 31st, 2023, we covered vouchers totaling $6,880. This is a year-over-year increase of 140%. As of June 1st, 2024, we have spent the $5,000 allocated from the city for the 2023-24 fiscal year and the $10,000 allocation from the parish for 2024. In addition to the city and parish allocations, Fana works to raise money for spay and neuter funds. But without additional funding from the city, we were running out of money well before the end of the year. Consequently, we continue to serve the citizens of Natchitoches. We respectfully request $10,000 allocation from the City of Natchitoches for the 2024-25 fiscal year. Thank you for your consideration, and do you have any questions?
Is anyone else, I'm not sure, does anyone else want to be contributing matching? Will anyone else, you can hit phones for any other.
We will search for grants. We will, we're always open to pay. The parish is included in the.
The parish don't have $10,000. They donate $10,000.
And we're constantly looking for grants from different areas around the country.
When we did the $5,000, I think we were, we didn't specify an amount, but we kind of indicated we would look at it. To increase the amount for the 24-25, so we certainly will, my opinion, should relook at it and see if we can do the $10,000. I think eventually, the spay and neuter, if it's done, and we stay consistent with it, we should see a reduction in animals and animals. Should see a payoff.
We never, we didn't advertise it that much because we knew we didn't have the money. But now we're having health fairs, and we have four spay and neuter clinics a year at the John Vila Center on Dixie Street. And it's just such a wonderful commitment to the community that we're making for the community that we love so much. It's like the bathrooms, you know, we don't want people saying things about the dead animals, and they have. But it's, it's the only way, right? Remember, I took him to a clinic and he goes, what's the solution? I said, this is the only solution. And we'll do what we can to rescue all the animals, you know. I don't run the spay and neuter program. Debbie Tibbetts runs it, and she's amazing. But I'm the one that gets to do the work for the animals that are not spayed and neutered in the community. And so when I speak passionately, I mean, I mean, we need to do this.
You are passionate, aren't you?
Yeah, great. I know everyone who's smart and you know that this is the right thing to do.
I guess my other question is going to be the 140% increase in spay and neuters. You don't do advertising, but I think you kind of mentioned some of it. So what would you attribute that much increase to?
Getting the word out.
Yes, word of mouth.
Getting the word out, but advertising our Facebook and the Journal and the Natchitoches Times, we've asked them to post that we have a spay and neuter clinic coming up, and they got it out. And word of mouth.
The applications ask where you are about spay and neuter, and I will tell you, the majority of them are through somebody else that got a voucher or a new work upon. There's, okay.
Excuse me, Dave. Excuse me, can you come to the podium?
Yes.
She said, is I have to. Oh, she's, oh, sorry. Hey, that's.
But most of the applications are through word of mouth. There's, we'll be seeing anything saying advertising anywhere. We have just started doing health fairs and our race clinics, we've done one. Any county one, and all of us all want to go down, one here in town. And we have people come from in the city of Natchitoches to those health clinics to get low-cost vaccines and vaccines and to get vouchers. So, I mean, it's just a matter of word of mouth, is pretty much. And the more people that have animals fixed, the more people tell somebody else. I met somebody the other day, and she asked me, and I told her, and she said, that sounds stuffy. And when we were talking, and she was telling me about a mom cat that had a shed over her house, and it had kittens, and I said, well, we can help you fix it. She goes, you're with that group, and you have with the vouchers. And I said, yes, and she said, that's happening.
Did you say it to Dave?
I did, yes.
I did, yes. And I'm spay and neuter coordinator for spay and neuter, and Brenda has really, really taken over the cat communities. She is working with one wife that had over 30 cats, a man that has over 20, and.
So what do you got to do with that? When they have so many cats, do you try to neuter any relatives?
No, we tried. If you can get your problem, I don't know, if it's male or female, we focus on the females because that's the most important thing. And we limit, we try to limit it to have many. We were just doing two or three per household. Now, if it's cat community because they are super likely, we try to give at least up to five if we can. And, but the cat, and Brenda has been driving cats to, maybe not like I was saying, neuter in Catholic. In addition to getting ones done here, I don't know how many friends it takes, but she and my related are like the cat transporters. You know, the body will take, she will take nine cats one time together. And we do that where we can with vouchers. And I was going to say one thing, if you want to really get an idea of the problem, go through Fana's Animals in the Need. Just in this past weekend, every time I looked, it was kitten in the need, or litter of cats, kittens, or a mom cat was dumped to a kittens. And I mean, it is just unbelievable right now because it's kittens season, and so you see a lot more cats in it. I'm going to sit here.
Any other comments, questions? Comments, questions, answer? All right, Mrs. Murphy, we'll take it into the rest of our phone room. Thank you all for being here. We'll take your request under consideration, okay? All right. All right, next, we have proclamation, and that's read by Councilman here today.
This is proclamation 38, 2024. Whereas on June 14, 1775, the Second Commendative Congress established a continental army to secure their common defenses, the original 13 colonies during war independence. Whereas the United States Army exists to serve a republic and defend the liberty and freedom of citizens to national security interests. Whereas many citizens in that have served our country as members of the United States Army and gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of this nation. And whereas this property recognizes the United States Army, Army Angel Lee on his birthday, and thank those who have served and those who have presently served our nation. And now therefore, I would wish you and me in the City of Natchitoches to hear about Plan June 15, 2024, as a birthday of the United States Army in the City of Natchitoches, commended and served to all citizens. Please join in the celebration of the U.S. Army birthdays of members creation in 1775. I move into a document, proclamation 38, 2024.
Motion made second. We've got some visitors here from the U.S. Army. We're so grateful to have you all here. I'm sure many of us have relatives, friends, maybe have served ourselves. So we appreciate and thank you all for serving. Just such a good time right now. Those of us who are listening, as you saw, D-Day, the 80th year since D-Day, that heralds a, you know, I know it's the Navy itself, which is all of the material working together to keep us safe and protect us, so we really do appreciate it. Not sure if either of you have anything to say besides the proclamations?
Just, we brought cake. We believe, we can't celebrate a birthday without cake, so we do have cake back there. We're glad to work.
And just so we know, I know she said there is cake to celebrate, so we want to do that. All right, any, any comments about the proclamation?
Thank you all. Thank you.
It's so refreshing.
It's a color, it's a color.
Yeah. Do you have the picture, I think?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Mrs. Stacey Rollcall.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
All right, that motion carries. All right, who want to bring out forward and get a picture with you?
Terrible.
Do you need to move to the left?
Do we need to move to the left?
No, you're fine, but more closer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right, happy birthday to the U.S. Army. Okay, next item is planning and zoning introduction, and Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 15 of 2024, and ordinance amending ordinance number 64 of 2001 by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. To rezone the following lot containing 6.3 acres, being track B of Division of Lands in section 72, 73, 74, 87, 105, 110, and 133, Township 9 North, Range 7 West, as shown on plat in number 135765, and the physical address is 8158, Highway 1 Bypass. And whereas the Planning Commission of the City of Natchitoches, State of Louisiana, has recommended at the meeting of June 4, 2024, that the application of Rachel LeBlanc, President of Friends of All United Natchitoches Animals, Fana, to rezone the property described above from R1 residential to B3 commercial to build and operate an animal shelter be approved. And this is for introduction.
All right. I mean, Councilman Nielsen, I think the reading of it is pretty clear. This is on the agenda so that Fana can lead the effort to build and operate an animal shelter. Obviously, we know it's going to take some partnership to get it done, but this is why we have this on the agenda to go ahead and rezone the property.
Finally getting to move forward. It's been a long time coming, so this is a big step. Exciting.
Well, I will say, I know Mrs. Walker has done a really good job in securing some funding. I'm sure, I know it's a teamwork deal, but certainly heard about, you know, her efforts to get some funding when it's very difficult to get funded from the state because everybody wants money for, you know, various projects. So kudos to you and great work. Don't know if there's any other comment that you have. Again, this is just being introduced. As Councilman Nielsen said, it was approved, the rezone was approved at the P and Z meeting. Is there anything you all would like to say, Mrs. Walker, about this, or it pretty much says what it says? All right, again, it's just for introduction, so it's something that we'll deal with on the 24th, 24th. All right. Next item on the agenda is also introduction, is read by Councilwoman Alarge Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 16 of 2024. It's an ordinance to amend and reenact section 8.1 of chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Building and Building Regulations. Said amendment being made to reflect current building codes as official building codes of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, provided for advertising, further providing for several ability, and further providing for a repealer and effective date of ordinance. Whereas the Code of Ordinances currently provides for and adopts various model codes as part of the official building codes for the City of Natchitoches. Whereas further, the Director of Planning and Zoning has recommended that the City of Natchitoches update section 8.1 of the Code of Ordinances to reflect the most recent versions of the various model codes. And whereas further, the City Council of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana desires to amend and reenact section 8 dash dash 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to provide for the adoption of the most recent model codes as proposed by the Director of Planning and Zoning. And Mayor, this is for introduction only.
Shantrel, not sure if you have any additional comment, Councilwoman Alarge read a good portion of that, and just sounds like the update our, our ordinances related to building regulations, and is that the main area?
Yeah, just to state that we are using the current codes for building and building regulations. In order for us to move forward and be in compliance with all of our building code regulations, we have to state what we've had, what years we've had to adopt it. So we needed to update that. The update hadn't taken place since the 80s, I think. We were still using 2006, so we needed to update it for today's date. Whereas the Code of Ordinances currently provides for and adopts various model codes as part of the official building codes for the city of Natchitoches. Whereas further, the Director of Planning and Zoning has recommended that the city of Natchitoches update section eight point one of the Code of Ordinances to reflect the most recent versions of the various model codes. And whereas further, the City Council of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, desires to amend and reenact section eight dash dash one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to provide for the adoption of the most recent model codes as proposed by the Director of Planning and Zoning. And Mayor, this is for introduction only.
Chantrell, not sure if you have any additional comment, Councilwoman at large, read a good portion of that, and just sounds like the update our, our ordinances related to building regulations, and is that the main area?
Yeah, just to state that we are using the current codes for building and building regulations. In order for us to move forward and be in compliance with all of our building code regulations, we have to state what we've had, what years we've had to adopt it. So we needed to update that. The update hadn't taken place since the eighties, I think. We were still using two thousand and six, so we needed to update it for today's date.
Who hasn't done that update since the eighties? The city or these folks? Us? Okay?
The city council and the council.
Our zoning code stated two thousand and six for all of our building codes, even though that's not what we're actually using. So to make sure that if anything came about, whether it be building codes or building regulations, if we stated that we were using updated current versions, then that's what we needed to state in our ordinances. Because if someone submitted a set of plans that said one year, but we argued we were using an updated year, whatever was listed in our ordinance was what was going to be verified as accurate.
Yep. Gotcha. So this is, it has some practical meaning to doing this, basically.
Correct.
Some real meaning. Any comment about this introduction, Council?
We just need to be on the most current code.
We do.
Right?
So building and all of that, we do. I agree with Dale on that.
If you have any specific questions, again, this is just introduction, so as I say with every item, certainly make a contact, make a connection with Chantrell if you need to do that, okay? All right, we're moving to some housekeeping. Now, this is just a portion of our housekeeping. We'll do the other portion at our next meeting, but certainly wanted to go ahead and, well, I guess, after resolution number thirty-nine, we'll get into our housekeeping, so I'm a little bit ahead of myself on that. But resolutions, number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-four, Councilman P.T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero three nine of two thousand twenty-four, a resolution designating Wednesday, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as an official holiday for the employees of the city of Natchitoches in observation of June tenth. Whereas the one hundred and seventeenth Congress established June tenth National Independence Day and declared June nineteenth as a legal public holiday. Whereas June tenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Whereas Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. Whereas through the Emancipation Proclamation, was signed into law, became official on January one, eighteen sixty-three, slaves in the state of Texas had not heard of the news until two and a half years later on June nineteen, eighteen sixty-five. Whereas people celebrate June tenth by eating barbecue, shooting fireworks, gathering at cookouts, and shopping at black-owned businesses, sharing history, and sipping on red drinks, a tradition that symbolizes perseverance and honors the blood that was shed of African-Americans. Whereas June, June tenth is a day that should be recognized by all Americans and a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose and resolve. Whereas the mayor and negative city council wish to declare Wednesday, June nineteen, two thousand twenty-four, as an official city holiday. May I move to adopt resolution number zero three nine?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this resolution. Councilman P.T., it has the why this is an important holiday, if you will, the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, and it gets into the, a little brief, little synopsis about the history of Juneteenth and the word being delivered by General Gordon Granger, two and a half years later, about the Emancipation Proclamation. So we'll talk a little bit later on about some of the events we have set up to commemorate, to celebrate Juneteenth. June nineteenth is the day, it falls on a Wednesday in the middle of the week, and actually, this is the year, maybe the first year since this has been a national holiday where the state and federal are on the same page. You would have the state do one day, the federal folks do another day, so, but both nationally and on the state level, they're recognizing Wednesday, June nineteenth, the day, as, you know, a day of reflection and rest, you know, all that that they say, so. But, yeah, any, any comment here?
As it should be.
Right? Okay, seeing no comment from anybody. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
All right, that motion carries. Again, we'll kind of lay out, some of you have been seeing the flyer, we'll lay out some things that we're gonna, that we're planning. Certainly appreciative of all those people who've been planning the events for Juneteenth. All right, next we've got read by Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a routine thing that we normally do, resolution numbers forty of two thousand twenty-four, resolution fixing the time, day, date, and place of regular meeting of the city of Natchitoches for the next twelve months. And be further advised that the place of the meeting shall be in Natchitoches City Chambers, seven sixteen, Second Street of City Avenue, unless provided otherwise by the mayor upon public notice. Be further revised by special meeting may be held according with provision, section two oh nine of Home Rule Charter, further reviving that the notice of the special meeting to be posted at a principal office of the city unless than forty-eight hours in advance in said meeting. And I move to adopt resolution number forty, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Pretty simple. Any, any comment here? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. The next resolution is going to be resolution number forty-one of two thousand twenty-four, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number forty-one of two thousand twenty-four, a resolution establishing meeting times and places of Natchitoches Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, Airport Advisory Commission, Water Works District Number One, whereas state law requires that notice of meetings of governing bodies and agencies thereof must be published in accordance with the provisions of Louisiana RS forty-two seven. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Natchitoches that the Planning Commission of the city of Natchitoches shall meet in regular session at five P.M. on the first Tuesday of each month at the city of Natchitoches Council Chambers, seven sixteen, Second Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana. Be it further resolved that the Historic District Commission for the city of Natchitoches shall meet at five P.M. on the first Monday of each month at the city of Natchitoches Council Chambers, seven sixteen, Second Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana. Be it further resolved that the Airport Advisory Commission will meet at five P.M. on the third Monday of each month, except December, at the Natchitoches Regional Airport Terminal located at four fifty Wallenberg Drive, Natchitoches, Louisiana. Be it further resolved that the Water Works District Number One shall meet at five thirty P.M. on the third Monday of each month at the Thomas Building located at five sixty Second Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana. And I move to adopt resolution number forty-one of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Again, pretty straightforward, something we've done, we do every year, so just establishing the meetings of these different commissions and where they are and the time that they hold them. Any comment about this particular item? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Right, next item is resolution number forty-two of two thousand twenty-four, Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution zero four two of two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution appointing Stacy McQuary as clerk of the council for the city of Natchitoches. Be resolved that the city council does hereby take cognizance of the recommendation of Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. that Stacy McQuary be appointed as clerk of the council for the city of Natchitoches in accordance with section two point oh eight of the Home Rule Charter. It is further resolved that the city council hereby confirms the said appointment, if she accepts. And I move for adoption of resolution number zero four two.
I second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this resolution. Man, I know the council works very closely with Mrs. Stacy, as do the department head, city attorney, and I know everybody just has nothing but positive things to say about her, so. Got any other comment, Council? Or any other comment in general?
She didn't tell me she accepted.
Welcome back. We do, we do appreciate the work, though. We do appreciate the work.
We don't even need to vote.
All right. Okay, roll cover, Mrs. Stacy.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, next is resolution number forty-three of two thousand twenty-four, Councilman Harrington.
Resolution forty-three of two thousand twenty-four, a resolution appointing the auditor for the city of Natchitoches. And be it resolved that the city council does hereby take cognizance of the recommendation of Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. that the firm of Thomas Cunningham Broadway and Totenbeer be appointed as city auditor for the city of Natchitoches for the period of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And be it, be it further resolved that the city council hereby confirms the said appointment. I move to adopt resolution forty-three of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to adopt resolution number forty-three of two thousand twenty-four, our auditor, the firm Thomas Cunningham Broadway Totenbeer. Clarissa, any remark, or you just want to let it go unremarked?
Great working relationship that we have with them. They've been with the city for a while. They're doing a good job, very thorough, so.
Yeah, she works, being the finance director. I'm sorry, say that again?
No, 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 just saying, we work very closely, and they've been very good with the city and very helpful in the past. We worked with them actually throughout the entire year, just not the audit. They're very helpful in any manner that we meet.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any other comment? Okay, I see now, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
All right, that motion carries. All right, next item is resolution, resolution number forty-four of two thousand twenty-four, Councilman P.T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero four four of two thousand twenty-four, a resolution appointing the fiscal agent for the city of Natchitoches. Be resolved that ordinance number zero three seven of two thousand eighteen of the negative city council awarded Sabine State Bank the contract for fiscal agent for the city of Natchitoches. Be it further resolved that the council takes the recommendation of Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. that Sabine State Bank, Natchitoches, Louisiana, be appointed as fiscal agent for the city of Natchitoches for the term June one, two thousand twenty-four, through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. It is further resolved that the city council hereby confirms the said appointment. I move to adopt resolution number four four of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded here, our fiscal agent being Sabine State Bank. We will just note, just for the record, that the contract does end in October, but this is a part of our housekeeping, so we need to go ahead and do this here, but you will be seeing, you know, have some proposals later on this year, okay? So just wanted to say that to everybody. Any, any additional comment? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
All right, motion carries. Next item is resolution number forty-five of two thousand twenty-four, Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Resolution number zero four five of two thousand twenty-four, resolution designate the Natchitoches time as official legal journal for the city of Natchitoches for the next twelve months. Be resolved that the city of Natchitoches is legal session, because being that the Natchitoches time is hereby designated as official legal journal for the city of Natchitoches for the next twelve months, and I move to adopt resolution number zero forty-five of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I mean, by law, we have to have a paper, a printed paper, to be our legal journal, so that's the way the law currently reads. Any comment? All righty, and I think we've, it's been great working with the folks at the Natchitoches Times, I believe. I know Stacy, you work with them a lot. All right, seeing no additional comment. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P.T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. That ends our housekeeping for this meeting, but again, we will have some more that we'll do on the meeting at the twenty-fourth, okay? All right, we have four other resolutions. The next one, resolution forty-six of two thousand twenty-four, Councilman P.T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero four six of two thousand twenty-four, resolution of the city of Natchitoches authorizing provision of local match funding to Rappids Area Planning Commission. Whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to states through Federal Transit Administration to support capital operating assistance projects for non, correction for non-urbanized public transportation systems under section five three one one of the Federal Transit Act. Whereas the Rappids Area Planning Commission requests local matching funds to support the continued provision of rural transit service for the general public in the city of Natchitoches. Whereas the contract for section five three one one, financial assistance includes the provision by it of the local share of project costs. Whereas it is the goal of the applicant to provide, correction, to provide the best transit system that can be provided with the funds available. Whereas the mayor is authorized to execute, execute grant agreements on behalf of the city of Natchitoches with the Rappids Area Planning Commission for aid in the financing of section five three one one assistance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the negative city council does hereby authorize the mayor to provide requested local matching funds to aid in financing of section five three one one, federal financial assistance, and execute agreements with the Rappids Area Planning Commission for capital operating assistance projects pursuant to section five three one one of the Federal Transit Act as amended, and it be further resolved that the mayor his or her designate is approved, is authorized to approve the request for local matching funds for the R.A.P.C. for the section five three eleven projects. Mayor, this time I want to open up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councilman P.T. We do have Mr. Jonathan Boland, who's here. He's been before us, before, and, you know, I think he shared with us some of the stats about the program. Now, Jonathan could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have at least a three hundred thousand dollar value already in terms of the grant that's been written. So this program has operated for a year without any local match funds, and I think you all remember, Council, that it did show heavier use in the city than it did in the parish, so that certainly was, looked to me, helped to fill a need. Couple of things I do want to say, when Jonathan and Gracie and the other gentleman, I forgot his name again, well, when they came a couple meetings ago, we didn't know at the time that, and again, I will say that the state is certainly more frugal this year in terms of funding that came out of the most recently adjourned session, but we do have a hundred thousand dollars that we have from the state that basically we could spend, you know, how we want to spend. So we didn't know that at the time that you all came to present, I guess, is the argument that I'm saying, so that is a potential pathway there for an additional year to partner with the parish if they're going to partner, but even if they don't, I talked to Jonathan, it's still forty thousand five hundred for the city to keep this program going for an additional year, all right, whether the parish is in or not. So I just wanted to make that clear, which I hope that they do get in. I think obviously it would be great if this was, were a free program. I know some people commented about the eight dollars, four dollars, well, eight dollars round trip is what it is. But, you know, I think Jonathan said maybe a lower cost is possible, but just to, you know, it's not possible to make it free. And I think other transit programs, as you go to Alexandria, Shreveport, those are not free programs, low cost but not free. Also want to say that you do have some medical transit by some other entities, but I believe that you have to have, the person who's riding, you know, the passenger would have to have Medicare or Medicaid. So if you don't have Medicare or Medicaid, and you have a doctor's appointment, you still would need a way to do that, and so R.A.P.C., this is a potential way. And so R A P C, um, this is a, a potential way, uh, to get it done. Last thing I'll say, and I wanna be quiet, is that, uh, I've already put Jonathan in contact with our, um, local, um, council on aging, because they have, uh, uh, an issue with, um, their meals on wheel funding, I think, is going out. So there's some potential in working with them, at least getting the people to the building to pick up their food and then get the people back, uh, to their home. Do it that way, uh, if council on aging is not gonna have that funding anymore, which I'm told by Ms. Barrios that, uh, it is running out. If it hasn't already, probably it's, uh, I think in July or something like that, so. Just wanna allow, uh, counsel and anybody else to have comment questions. Again, we have Jonathan here who can, uh, back us up on, 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 on something. But I will, uh, certainly recommend to, um, fund it for another year at that forty thousand five hundred, uh, number with a hundred thousand dollar, uh, funding mechanism being a way that we can fund it for this year. Any other comments?
Mayor, you and I spoke a couple of weeks ago on it, and as you know, I've got a few concerns. Um, I think, uh, I wish Jonathan would have come months ago and approached us about funding. Um, I don't think we have the information that we need to make a good decision. I don't know what their marketing plan is or how they propose to, uh, make this more of a workable situation. As you know, the parish numbers were very deficient over the, I don't know, remember how long the program's been going on? Two years, one year, three years? Um, but their numbers were terrible. Um, the city numbers for the money that they're asking for are not very workable either. And you have a couple of, uh, independents that are doing it in the private sector, and I always am resistant to do uh, public funded versus private funded when they're trying to survive on their own uh, against a private business. And oh, you have B and M Logistics, and you also have a medical transport, which I'm sure those are skewed that way. Also, I do not in any way wanna compete against our own hospital, which was forced to start their own logistics company, which, if I'm correct, is no cost to the patients in the parish, and this may in fact be why their parish numbers are not that good. Uh, because a hospital will pick them up, bring them to their medical appointments in town. We're supporting our own hospital there, and I, I don't, I don't have enough information. I may make a bad comment here, but I would assume since they're out of Alexandria, they don't go to Shreveport where a lot of the medical needs of our parish citizens and city citizens are, is in Shreveport, they go to Alexandria. So I don't know it's, if it's fitting the needs that, that we need. They're using really big vehicles. They're very, very nice. Their logo great. But they're a sixteen pa, I'm guessing here, sixteen passenger van. And from what I've observed since the presentation, there is typically one, maybe two people in the vehicle. So that to me is not that efficient. And if you, I'm not really good in math, but if you take the charge of four dollars to go pick somebody up and bring them to a store or wherever, and four dollars that they're gonna pay them to bring them back home or to do council on aging, our cost, as it sits with the numbers that they shared with us, our cost is forty some odd dollars each way. So it's an eighty dollar expense for us, and I, that just doesn't mathematically sit well with me. So that's my thoughts, but, you know.
Well, and I think, I think, uh, Jonathan is here, maybe he can answer some of that, and as you're coming, uh, yeah, come on, Jonathan.
Well, again, thank you for your time to be able to present this opportunity to you guys today. I'll take some of these points in order. First of all, starting with the marketing plan, overall program itself. So we've only operated for a year, supplied about thirty-five hundred trips, thirty percent of a medical, twenty-one percent employment, twenty-five percent general trip purposes, bank, grocery, so on and so forth. Regarding the size of the vehicles, again, being a pilot phase, it's a demonstration period. We wanted to get the numbers on the books. We have two minivans on order right now. There are five passenger Chrysler minivans, ADA equipped. We hope to house both of those, uh, either in, um, in Natchitoches or one in Natchitoches and including one of the twelve two B passenger buses. That's the twelve passenger bus that you're referring to as well earlier. So with that, uh, right now, we are in the search for a driver to base those buses out of Natchitoches to cut down what's called the deadhead miles, the miles that were put on the vehicle to drive them to and forth to Natchitoches to provide the service and to come back. Uh, so we are working on ways to improve the efficiency of that service. We did have an employee that was based out of Natchitoches for a limited amount of time. However, that driver did not work out. We are hunting for another driver for Natchitoches. We're working with the mayor's office to advertise for that position. Having those buses based out of Natchitoches would greatly cut down on the overall operating cost of that. So right now, it's roughly about four dollars a mile, if you wanna look at the total overall operating cost for the vehicle right now. So having said that, that's why the federal government put together the program that we have pursued in bringing forth to you today, the FTA fifty-three eleven program. That provides fifty percent of the operating funds. So to do that, they need fifty percent of the local match. So in reality, what you're getting is forty thousand five hundred dollars worth of transit service matched with an additional forty thousand five hundred dollars worth of transit service. That's what you're getting, and that's what we're offering. The rest of that is landy app. So regarding those other pieces, those factors of operating costs, the funding for me to be here today does not come out of this request. The request is purely translated into service delivered. And we're open to come up with any type of mechanism that will satisfy the council to report on these facts as since you would have made an investment in the system. We wanna make sure that you're getting the information that you need to justify this investment. Now, again, forty thousand five hundred dollars is what you're paying for, for an operating system that costs three hundred thousand dollars or more. We've already done our part. We've lined up fifty percent of that, hundred fifty thousand dollars contracts on the desk ready to be signed. Now, if you guys do, uh, select to approve the forty thousand five hundred, we would hope that the parish council would match that for the eighty-one thousand dollars that we request to continue the service that is already seeing an increase year over year in terms of the people that's being, um, utilized in that service. And again, most of those trips are coming out of Natchitoches because the concentration, majority of people, the densities, concentration of people, and where that service is needed most is coming out of Natchitoches right now. We hope to continue to expand that program as we work with the parish. But again, what's on the table is forty thousand five hundred dollars to be matched with forty thousand five hundred for a total amount of transit service. If the parish does not select to support the program for that additional forty thousand five hundred, what will happen is this, we'll just pare the service down to the city of Natchitoches itself, and we will no longer be serving the rural community outside of the city of Natchitoches. So that's what's on the table right now. I'm happy to entertain any of the questions. Uh, one more option I wanted to point out or, uh, noted, uh, regarding Natchitoches Central, uh, the hospital. That service is, as I understand it, a Medicare Medicaid provider. So this service is general rural public. It wouldn't compete with that, as it would not compete with any other private, uh, sector provider that is Medicaid or Medicare funded. So we are not Medicaid or Medicare funded. Uh, what happens is if you are someone who is on Medicare Medicaid and you need a trip, you call the number on the back of the card. They schedule that trip through one of the Medicaid private brokerage firms. And that, that's the service that is provided through those companies themselves. This is to fill in the gaps for the additional unmet trips that are needed for everyday purpose trips inside the city of Natchitoches and inside rural Natchitoches Parish as well. That's the ask that's on the table today, and we hope that you guys take additional consideration of that, entertain any of the questions you may have.
Hey, what about the Shreveport thing that Councilman Nelson pointed out? I thought you said something. Again, this is in, in Natchitoches Parish, and it could go to Alexandria.
That's correct. So right now, uh, the way that the service operates, the service area, uh, is a two thousand square mile service area consisting of all of Natchitoches and all of Grant Parish. Uh, since it was a pilot phase, fully funded just to serve those two, we have a current service area that just operates within those boundaries, and we do have limited service to the Alexandria-Pineville area. And again, that's not just for medical, that's all trip purposes as well. Uh, we are not going to Shreveport at this time. We have had several, uh, requests for Shreveport, for Natchitoches for those trips. Uh, we're looking to expand that in the future, but right now, we're trying to move the program beyond the pilot phase to sustainability year one before we can grow to serve additional areas outside of that. So we're a small program. We have six vehicles, and yes, they're all twelve two B passenger buses, but we acquired four of those vehicles for seventy-eight dollars because it takes eighteen months to build a new bus. But, uh, again, to that point, we have two new minivans that have been ordered. They're on the way, and that would greatly improve the overall efficiency of it. So being that it is a government program, we have to operate with what we're handed, and so that's why we have those twelve two B passenger buses. Up and down the interstate, they're not as efficient, but if you house them again inside the city of Natchitoches, you can have multiple riders on that bus. We have the software already set up to do it, but just given the fact of how we're currently operating over such a large service area at this time and not having anything based out of the city of Natchitoches, that's one of the reasons why we're, uh, driving as much as we are.
I was gonna ask a question the mayor asked, but also I wanna know about how many people per day on a daily basis do you pick up within the city? Do you have an estimate of?
From the city per day, I do not, but I know, uh, we operate.
On a weekly basis, well.
On a weekly basis?
Yeah, how, how many on a weekly basis?
I don't wanna shoot a number from the hip, but I can tell you that our numbers right now have only been focused on the combined service area because that's what we were paid to do through the, the original federal grant. But if we are moving forward for this, we could create reporting mechanisms that would allow you to document every single trip that is in and out of Natchitoches on a weekly basis.
Because I think you say so. Two people on the van, what'd you say? Okay, I just.
That's just, uh.
A ball figure, yeah. It's just my opinion and stuff, and, and this will basically be from the, the council, you know, to actually really. I like, you know, more to give more information to table because at this point, you know, it's like a little, you know, rough to actually really say, you know, if it's good for the citizen, you know, which, you know, we all saying that a lot of people that we do know go to Shreveport and eight dollars, which you, you know, was saying at first would be a total ball figure of eight dollars for, for, correct? Twenty-four dollars to go to Shreveport, uh, Alexandria, that, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that's, you know, my opinion and stuff, that's a little bit too high, which I know gas prices, you know, high, but that's just my opinion and stuff to gather more information, you know. That should be up to, you know, the council and stuff, you know, to table it to get, you know, more information where you can gather it up, you know, with the ball figure, how many people are going to Alexandria, how many people are going to departments in town? You know, I know you say you don't do Shreveport, maybe gather how you can provide something for Shreveport because a lot of the residents in Natchitoches do have a appointment in Shreveport because that is one of our main, you know, hospital that they do, you know, medical specialists. You know, a lot of people don't go to, you know, Rappids, some of them do, but your, you know, program is really good, you know, I like the table or two, you know, for you can, you know, bring it a little bit more detail, you know, have it prepared, you know, give us some more information for it.
Certainly. Um, one of the things that we're operating against is the June thirtieth deadline that we have, uh, being that it's a, a program that operates through D O T D, it's a, it operates the state fiscal year. So, uh, we have been working, uh, for months to get to this point, to be able to ask. Um, we do not want to jeopardize the program and, and push it to the twenty-fourth when we need to execute those agreements, um, with the state soon. I could certainly work to put together additional information to demonstrate that cost effectiveness for you guys. Uh, but it is important to note that this is a program that was started after an overall plan to help improve mobility for the overall region. The pilot is the demonstrator, uh, portion. We're finished with that. The next step is to move to sustainability. If we're not able to sustain the program at this stage, we'll never get to the next step.
What, um, we, we don't have the contract before us. The, the resolution does mention that the contract includes the provision of the local share of project costs, but it, so the resolution didn't have an amount, but you're stating the amount is forty, forty thousand five hundred?
Correct. The, the agreement for the total overall, uh, FTA fifty-three eleven would between R A P C and D O T D, and that's for the actual distribution of the FTA funds. The matching portion would be between R A P C and the city of Natchitoches, set forth by a mechanism at your preference. Um, for us at this time, we're just looking for a letter of funding commitment. We're not looking for a check. We're not looking for anything other than a lump sum commitment over the period of a year that can match those funds that we have for the transportation program. Um, and again, that's about as much as we could offer at this time, but it is forty thousand five hundred. Ideally, that would be matched with forty thousand five hundred from, um, the grant, uh, parish council governments, and that would be matched with a request from, uh, sixty-nine thousand dollars from the Grant Parish Police Corps. You come up with a hundred fifty thousand dollar total match to match the FTA.
And I think you answered my next question, which is the duration, duration of this is a year.
That's correct.
Then a, annually, you'd have to.
Come, keep coming back up and vote on it again. Yes, and so we are growing the program, so what happens if we don't succeed here today? And if the parish council governments opts not to elect the program, we cease operations in Natchitoches Parish, uh, and we move that to another parish that we're working on right now. We're pursuing La Salle, Wynn, and Catahoula at this time. Sabine is next. Uh, but it's important to note that we have these resources, and we want to invest them where we know we're going to have an existing relationship and a partnership. Yes, this will be a request that we will have to come back before you every year, the service cost, uh, money. And the goal with what we're trying to do, growing this, to fill the mobility gap in the seven parishes of central Louisiana. Out of twelve, seven have no rural public transportation service at all, right? So we're trying to grow that to fill the gaps for the rest of those parishes. And by every parish we bring on board, the overall local share decreases. That's the goal. So each individual parish, Natchitoches Parish, you don't have one point three million dollars to start a program year one on your own. That's the total amount to start a program that would serve the unmet transportation needs for Natchitoches Parish, right? But for us, we know that. We know that's the challenge. That has been the reason why no individual entity has been able to sustain public transit service. That's why we're only asking for forty thousand five hundred dollars. Because forty thousand five hundred, you don't get the best, most efficient service to start with, but it's something that allows us to grow and build upon. And by being an investor and a partner with this, you have a say and a seat at the table in how we can shape this program to serve the needs of your constituents. Opt to do nothing, the program will be lost, it will no longer be available, and we will move to the next.
I know you're saying that. I know you're trying to sell the program to us. If, is there an opportunity if we lose you, you come back to us again another time?
Of course. Uh, if the program is not successful here, we'll move to a different area. If the program is available the next year, we can of course come back around and try to do this invest again.
Thank you.
Jonathan, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Only thing I would say is, um, we had a master plan process, about a two-year process, and we identified several things that Natchitoches needs, and one of them that, and I think the council knows this, we talked about is a form of public transportation. Now, it was the mobility hubs that you would see in Alexandria. This one is what you, you have a word for it, driveway to door to.
Curb to curb.
Curb to curb, all right.
What areas do you go in?
It goes anywhere in Natchitoches.
Anywhere in Natchitoches.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just asking particularly what areas, like, cause you said, I wanted to know it's to the number of people and.
Like where. I don't know if you're looking at those stats.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, 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 if we're, you're talking about within Natchitoches itself or where people that are using their service where they're going? Okay, so most of the trips in Natchitoches are in and out of the Natchitoches area. So we're talking, most of those trips are inside the city of Natchitoches itself. There's a few trips that are coming to the Alexandria area, maybe to the V A. But a lot of those, and we have a few trips that go Natchitoches to Natchez, like right outside of Natchitoches. But I mean, the majority of trips that we're seeing coming out of Natchitoches or. But I mean, the majority of trips that we're seeing coming out of Natchitoches or in and around the Natchitoches area, so the city of Natchitoches itself. So one of the information, pieces of information we put together in that brief for the last meeting we were here is a breakdown of basically the 3,500 trips that we had provided to date. And we tried to break that down as best we could between city and parish, just to make sure everybody was on the same page as to how it's being used. And I think it was 89% of the trips or something like that in the parish of Natchitoches were coming in and out of the city of Natchitoches itself. So I mean, the bulk of the service that we're supplying is coming in and out of the city right now.
Would you consider doing it differently?
Of course.
Instead of curb to curb?
Yeah, the beauty of this program-
Because you already have the bus that holds more than two people.
Well, yes, so each-
Pick up points. I mean, that's what we're looking for. That's what our plan is telling us we need. And you've got the buses, we got a plan, but we're not doing the same thing.
Well, what that would be is a different FTA program. That's 5307 fixed route transit. Now, there's, of course, there's a way for us to shape and tailor the service that we have, as long as it fits within that 5311 prescription, the way it's prescribed by the federal government. Typically, it's curb to curb just because of the rural area, the general nature of rural public transportation service, which all of Natchitoches Parish is considered as rural statistically. So we're, that's why we're able to operate. But to, to look at what's called a community circulator or a fixed route, we can definitely consider that growing the program. But that would be potentially a different federal funding source. So that's something that we do have experience helping other communities grow themselves. But for this particular program, it's rural public transit service. And it would be, again, curb to curb, any trip purpose. So it's, it's general member of the public call in advance to schedule a ride 24 hours minimum, five days a week.
And remind me, I think you answered this last time, how someone makes an appointment for a ride, they have to do it via, do they go on a website and do it? They do the, via telephone? I remember they had to pay in advance too, correct?
That's both. So you can call the number or you can go to the website. So the website has what's called a trip preservation request form. You just fill that out with the details of the information. We call to confirm the information. And then once we confirm that trip, we accept payment over the phone. Once it's paid, we're in the schedule. We use our automated scheduling and dispatch software to make as much of an efficient route as possible. We do hope to stagger those riders to make sure we're maximizing those buses with that software. But that's pretty much how it works. So they can call in advance or they can go online and make that request. The online trip reservation request is also how we work with our partner agencies. For example, the Grant Council on Aging, we have what's called a fair agreement with. They have, for example, a program that can pay for trips for their seniors, but there's no entity to give the funding to to provide the trips. And so what we do, we partner with them. They work on behalf of their client to schedule the ride through the online platform or call us. We provide the trip, invoice them on the backend. So those seniors are able to get that trip through the Grant Council on Aging. We hope to do the same thing here with Natchitoches Council on Aging and also the Bendy Johnson Education Center as well. So those are some irons in the fire, so to speak.
And then the other thing I was gonna say, not only is that our master plan, even though it's not the same exact model, it is the basic idea of getting people where they want to go, where they need to go, which, whether it's the mobility hub or whether it's what you all do. It's same goal, same concept, right?
That's correct.
Moving people from place to place. And the other thing I wanted to say, the number of rides have increased, just like we saw with Fana, how their spade neuters went up, word of mouth. And I think you've had some word of mouth to happen. And I just suspect that that's gonna continue to increase. And before you all were here, we had nothing. So if you all are gone, we go back to nothing. I say nothing. You have the people who need to get the doctor's appointments if they have Medicare and Medicaid. But not everybody who goes to the doctor has Medicare and Medicaid too. I think we have to recognize that as well, so. But I do appreciate all the comments council has made. Councilman PT, you're the only one who hasn't said anything.
Yeah, I was just really concerned about how many people would really utilize the service, you know. And I think like Councilwoman Rose had mentioned, just really getting some information and seeing like, you know, who really using the service, you know, before we kind of chef out that kind of money.
And when you say who, we know the number has increased, you mean who like, kind of what Councilwoman Larch Smith was saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Where they, where they live in Natchitoches?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can do that, Mr. Bowlin. I don't know if you can do it.
No, not with the data that we've already collected, again, because it was just focused on the 2,000 square mile service area. We were able to break that down generally by trip purpose, like medical, employment in general, and then kind of what's in the city and what's in the parish. But we haven't been able to, we're not able to break everything down by district at this time. But starting July 1st, if you guys are on board as a partner, we can definitely start tracking it that way.
Yes, I thought the last meeting, I had notes that y'all stated or showed us it was over the year like 900 something rides in the city.
Uh, that was probably the information that was included on the back of your briefing. So that was just breaking down the information.
Yes, that's what I had.
Yeah, it was something in 2023, and then it increased. So we saw an increase.
That's correct. So the, the first year, we, we started operating service March of 2023. So that briefing broke the information down by the two years, 23, 20, 2023, from March to basically December 31st. And then 2024, from January 1st to, I believe it was May 15th or May 31st for that, for that briefing itself. So that was the latest count that we had on that information. We have had additional trips from Natchitoches increase at this time. And again, if you want to get into the other types of information, what we'll record right now is what is required by the Fed. So we have the trip, we have the purpose, we have the rider, we have the time of day, we have the beginning mile, we have the end mile. We have whether they have escorts. So some, some of our ADA riders may require an escort to help them on the bus. The escorts do ride for free. But we were able to, to tell you exactly how many escorts and how many riders and where they're coming from as far as city and parish in those general categories. And that's just the data that we have for this past program up until what will be June 30th. But we could create and continue to track and monitor that moving forward.
Jonathan, you've been great with your time and I think your explanation.
Why don't you just go to the parish?
Been to the parish.
It's been to the parish, and the parish is waiting to see if the city is gonna act.
They, they want to know if we're gonna do it.
So the city wanted to step up and be a leader in this capacity.
But even if they don't, even if they don't, like you said, you just tailor it to the city.
That's right.
Because I said, like I said, without, and we gotta move on because we got a couple of agenda items. But I really appreciate, I think the council wanted to engage you. But I, I'm sold on it for, at least for a year, especially given we have the funding source of $100,000 that we didn't expect that we're gonna have. And like I said, if we don't do it, we go back to where we were, which, you know, I just don't think perfect should be the enemy of, of good. So, but council, you're the ones that have to make a motion, so.
Well, I thought the, I thought I heard the parish denied it, is that not?
We got, we got someone from the parish council. Yeah?
Yeah, parish representative right here.
My name's Wayne Holm. Yes, this came before the parish. And we had a lot of discussion, just like you guys, and had a, could not get over the idea that there were six riders per day in the parish, and that came from their numbers, 12 trips. And it was like a solution to a problem that didn't exist. So what happened was, we tried to amend that motion to say, wait, let's wait till see what the city says. That amendment failed. Then moved that we vote on it. Well, no, I did not. They asked for a vote. They got no motion. And it died. Now, I understand it's going to come up again.
I see.
Okay, so, but the, I want to get your hopes up. The, the six riders per day really-
Yeah, I understand.
Really stabs deep, you know. Okay?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And I'll just say this, I see a couple of hands. I want to make it very brief because we, we've got to move on. We got a couple of other things we want to deal with. And, and, and thank you, Councilman Holm. He did speak to the parish. The numbers are much more in the city. I think we all saw that. I'll just make that point. How about, Mr., here we get you first, and then Bowlin, if you want to come back.
Hello everyone, I'm Dr. Lacaz, and I'm the Campus Administrator for Boja Parish Community College. We actually promote this program, REPC, for our adult education students, also for our students that are coming to our, our campus for community college that don't have a ride, don't have some other transportation. As you may know, we're located on the bypass, has no sidewalks, it's a little sketchy if you want to walk it. And so many of our students have used that service to come in. And I know of a couple of students in particular, one in particular that has used, so in the pilot year, it was Rappie's, Grant, and Natchitoches. Am I correct? Grant and Natchitoches. And we have one student that came from Grant to Natchitoches and used that service each time needed to come. And he is now, he was able to get his high set, and he's working on his manufacturing degree now. So he's working on becoming a contributing member of society. And we know that transportation is an issue in Natchitoches. We know this as part of the master plan, something that we've talked about for a long time. So as Mayor Williams was saying, it's better than, you know, it is a solution. It's something that we've needed, and it's, if without it, we have nothing. So it may be six people in the rural community, maybe even more inside Natchitoches. But for those individuals, having the opportunity to pay a small fee to come to college or to go get groceries or to see a sixth loved one, you know, those, those moments are important. And if they don't have a ride to get there and we have no option, then, then they have nothing. So I, I just want to put my two cents in there. Appreciate your time.
And he's actually on for the next agenda item, but I think it's perfect that you're here for it. All right? Good. Okay, so look, we, some motion or something from the council.
It sounds like we don't have time to table it, what you said, June 28th or 24th?
Well, our meeting is on the 24th. Your deadline is the 30th. So we technically do. Right. Are they gonna extend you to the 30th?
This, that's, that's the end of it for us, yes. We're, we're trying to get it sooner than that, but I mean, the start of the new contracts that appears July 1st.
Okay.
Transportation is very much needed here. I know that. We really need the transportation.
So I'd like to move the table if we could.
I don't know what more information we would need. But she moved. She wants a second.
All right, nobody's gonna second it? Then what happened? That just dies. It just dies. All right, is there another motion? Okay. I guess the council just want to move on to the next item.
Well, let me go ahead. I'll second to table. Can we do that?
The matters are already on the agenda.
PT has to call, doesn't he? PT have to move on, call, what you want to call.
Well, what were you gonna say, Alex? You were saying something.
Yeah, it's on the agenda already for y'all to vote it up, up and down. Just move to the table.
Phone you an agreement to table? I just want to kill it there.
Yeah. I make a motion to vote on this particular ordinance, number 046.
Yeah, to vote, he needs to say how to vote. So what do you, you say?
You just make, make a motion to vote on it?
Does it make a motion?
Call him for the vote.
We call for the vote.
Okay. He needs a second.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Stacy?
That was Eli's second? Yes, she did.
Roll call vote.
Okay, Eli?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Smith?
No.
Harrington?
No.
PT?
No.
All righty. The motion fails. Right? But Jonathan, thanks for your time, man. You, you've been great. All right. I wish you well with those other communities. All right.
Come back and see us again.
Next item is something, it's read by Resolution Number 47, 2024, read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 47 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to sign a lease agreement between the city of Natchitoches and the Boja Parish Community College, BPCC, that outlines the rights and responsibility of each partner as it relates to the rental of building and office space for the Natchitoches Fire Department Training Division located on the BPCC college campus at 6587 Louisiana Highway 1 bypass, Natchitoches, Louisiana 71457. Whereas the city of Natchitoches Fire Department has established its fire training center on the campus of Boja Parish Community College. And whereas the city of Natchitoches Fire Department and the Boja Parish Community College has had a cooperative endeavor agreement to use the campus for the fire department training center since 2001. And whereas the fire department training area has included what was once utilized as the carpenter shop for its classroom and equipment storage area. And whereas by agreement of both parties, the Boja Parish Community College wishes to utilize the fire department training area to expand its welding program and move the fire department training area to what was once the print shop on the campus. And whereas this lease agreement shall commence on March 1, 2024 and shall remain in effect until June 30, 2030. Either party may terminate lease within 90 days written notice to the other party. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Natchitoches City Council in legal session convening does hereby authorize Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to sign a lease agreement between the city of Natchitoches and Boja Parish Community College for the fire department training center. And I move to adopt Resolution Number 47 of 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This agreement has been in existence for some time. Chief, when is it something you'd like to say additionally from what was read?
First, I'd like to thank Boja Parish Community College for a great partnership that we have. Dr. Lacaz, working with, working with our attorneys and Ms. Clarissa have done a great job on getting this going. And it's imperative that we have this, that it's not only for use for the city, the parish also uses it. The parish fire department comes in and use it. So it's a regional training facility. And it also helps us with our PIL rating. So it's, it's imperative that we have it. And it's, it's been great partnership throughout the years, and we hope to continue with that.
Dr. Lacaz, you like to add some comments?
Hello, I'm Dr. Lacaz again. I just wanted to say it has been a really great partnership. This new lease agreement puts it into a five-year lease, so it keeps us from having to renew this every year. We've been, we've had this partnership strong even before Boja Parish Community College has been here in Natchitoches. So it's just ongoing. It kind of draws up some explanation of duties and kind of gives some better understanding of the rights and responsibilities of both parties. So it has a little bit more legal information in there than what typically we had in the past. And then the last thing I want to mention is that we feel so strongly about this partnership and, and like the fire training center being there on our campus so much that we have not gone up on, on rent, as have many landlords in the surrounding areas. That's a joke. Thank you for laughing, yeah. No, we've, we've kept it the same price as it always has. This is a 13,100 square foot commercial space. And we're leasing it at $6,000 a year, so that's less than 50 cents a square foot. So it's a good deal for the fire, fire department, and we're glad to have them there.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to make one comment, one change. This is not a negative. Hopefully, when I say it, doesn't seem like a negative. Hopefully, when I say it, doesn't seem like a negative. Because we do feel so strongly about our relationship with, with their organization and having a training center there, we wanted to honor their request to assume some of the maintenance costs, because we are there and we utilize the building. She felt very strongly about it. So in the new contract, we do have a $10,000 cap on maintenance. So if something comes up, we wanted to be able to assist them and share that maintenance cost. So I just wanted to make note of that, that that is something that is new in our agreement with them. Now, that's not a guarantee, that's only if something comes up. We do wanna assume some responsibility, because they do allow us free range of that facility. And, and it being such a large facility, it has been very beneficial.
Yeah, it says that in repairs on B, it should not exceed $10,000.
Just wanted to make note of that.
And then, and then the full cost, just in section E, limitation on annual expenditure, is $20,000 for the full cost per year.
And in section two, 500 per month?
Yes, ma'am, that comes out to 6,000 a year. And that's just the lease agreement price, the rental price.
Cheap rent.
It is cheap.
Thanks, Dr. Lacaz. Really appreciate you being here. We did get a motion and a second on this? Any additional comment? I know Chief Winters spoken about it, Dr. Lacaz has as well. Any comment? Again, been a great partnership. All right. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Final two items are resolutions. These are standard resolutions with the LCDBG program. Both of these are related to the clearance program. Again, that was a $205,000 grant that we received. I think we got the notice back in February to start demolishing some property. So this is a couple steps in that process before we actually start get, you know, trucks moving and taking down some of those properties. All right? And this first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
Resolution 48 of 2024, a resolution authorizing Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to adopt the required plans and policies for compliance with the LCDBG program. Whereas the City of Natchitoches has been awarded a fiscal year 2023 Louisiana Community Development Grant, a block grant, LCDBG for clearance and demolition. And whereas the LCDBG program requires the adoption of plans and policies for compliance with the LCDBG regulations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Natchitoches in regular session convene that the following plans and policies be adopted. Number one, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. Number two, revised LCDBG procurement policy, which are intended to serve as a legal authority for the procurement of supplies, equipment, construction services, and professional services. I move to adopt Resolution 48 of 2024.
Second.
Again, as, as I said, this is pretty standard. We do it with all of our LCDBG programs that we have going on, whether it's park improvement or the HVAC. Thanks for letting me, any comment here? Additional comment? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next and final resolution on the agenda is Resolution Number 49 of 2024, Councilwoman Larch Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to hire Cothran, Graff, and Smoke Inc. for engineering services related to the FY fiscal year 23 LCDBG clearance program. Whereas the City of Natchitoches has been awarded funding for the fiscal year 2023 clearance program. And whereas the purpose of the funding is for clearance and demolition of properties. And whereas the necessary scope of work to be implemented by Graff, Smoke, and Goth Cothran is environmental review for approved properties slated for demolition. And whereas the commitment for this scope of work is not to exceed $11,500, and it's, and is subject to being approved for funding under the stated program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Natchitoches has hired Cothran, Graff, and Smoke, Inc. Corporation to provide environmental review services for properties to be demolished under the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG program. And I move for adoption, Resolution Number 049, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. As I said earlier, one of those standard ones has not exceeded 11,500. Everybody knows where under Smoke, he's normally here when he's on the agenda, everybody knows him. But pretty straightforward. Motion made and seconded. Any comment about this piece? All righty. Seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All righty, that motion carries. Our next, we've said this a couple times, our next meeting is on the 24th. But also tomorrow, there is a public work session dealing with short-term rentals, and that is gonna be from 6:30 to 5:30 on tomorrow. We are certainly inviting the public to come. There'll be an opportunity for us to discuss as a mayor and city council, we're not, you know, we don't typically get to do it all together at once like that. So we've advertised and done necessary advertising, everything like that to satisfy the sun shaw law. So again, encouraging people to come today. I think we've got a few other announcements. Fireworks over Kane River, we have several opportunities. Juneteenth celebration is this coming Saturday. You'll see more about that in just a minute. But also you have the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame on the 21st, that's a Friday, on the 21st at, it looks like 9:15, right there. And then you have Celebration on the Kane, which is for the 4th of July, which is gonna be on the 29th. That's, that's a Saturday as well, because the 4th falls on like a Thursday or something, doesn't it? This year? All right. All right, so this is more about Juneteenth that we're doing. I know other communities are doing it, but here, here's what we've got. I think during the day before we get to this event, which starts at 6:00 PM, which is gonna feature, it's free admission, and we, we are so thankful for our sponsors, they will be certainly recognized, and I think they're recognized on the bottom, but you can't see it from where you are. But we do appreciate our sponsors who helped to make this possible. But DJ Chris is gonna be, I think we all know DJ Chris, Tipsy, the band, many may not know them, but they're really, really good. And then Chris Alderman, I think his name is out there pretty good. So I want people to come, have a great time, and, but even before that, I think we've got some things planned at the MLK Rec Center, basketball games and things like that that we're planning. Do we have a time on that, Clarissa? I know that's not on this flyer.
Yes, games are gonna start at 10:00. And right now, we're planning to have three games. If you wanna come see your illustrious mayor play in the celebrity basketball game, you can come by and check that out. We will have a future leaders game that'll consist of a younger group of individuals. I think they were honored at the Sports Hall of Fame. Raph Wilson is the one who kind of brought that together, it's a group from Natchitoches, and then it's a group from Shreveport. So we're gonna call that our future leaders game. And then hopefully, if everything pans out, we may have a first responder game, maybe.
Okay. Sometimes they have to leave. What's that, Kevin?
We also have, it's a health fair going on there from during that period of time with some vendors out front, snow cone trailer, and some little pop-up shops are gonna be out front, weather permitting. But if not, they're gonna come inside. So they will be there, rain or shine, so.
Lot going on, yeah.
Yep. So we've got a lot going on this, this Saturday. You got a question? Right, that's right. Is this Saturday, the 15th? Yeah, correct. All right, is there another? Farmers Market is gonna be the 15th, 8 to 12. All right, Mini Makers, this is probably one of the most popular Farmers Market. That's where you have children, kids come, and they may bake things or make little things, and they sell them. So, so this is, like I said, people like to attend this, this, this one here. Okay? Is there another one? All right, there's a talent day on the 22nd, so Farmers Market, and that's the last, okay? Mommy and Me, Natchitoches Art Guild Gallery, they're offering an evening class on the art of the gelatin plate printmaking on Tuesday, June 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And then they tell you where it's located, at 584 Front Street. Registration, registration, excuse me, can be taken by phone or in person. And then the number is 352-1626, and $45 to cover the cost of the materials. All right? Northwestern State University of Electronic and Continuing Education will offer up, offer a pick-up-your-brush painting class on June 13th and June 27th, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM on the second floor of South Hall. So $45 each session to participate in that. All right? Look, I will say something, Paints Up Division, they're outside the city limits, but they're having something on Juneteenth, so look for that. Also, the Town of Natchez, both of those are gonna be on the 22nd of June. But then also on the 22nd, be on the lookout for the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame, events that are taking place. You've got an event that Friday, which we noted in the, on the flyer. But, you know, this is Simone Augustus, and this is the, the Cormier guy, Cormier? He's UFC, so he's a big name. Drew Brees, of course, is probably the biggest name, undoubtedly the biggest name with the class. But, so there are some events going on, so just promote that. The Friday event is free to the public, so, so do that. Actually, they got several free events. The Thursday night press conference, which I think is about 5:30 at Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame.